I'll call the meeting to order. This is, what is today? November 15th. Our pre-ten meeting. Meeting. First, is there anyone here for public comment? I see none. So I'll move on to our miscellaneous calendar item has been postponed. So we're going right into our calendar. How often does that happen? First item is Building Department Personnel. Question of authorizing the filling of the local building inspector vacancy in the Building Department. Mr. Bennett, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you. Here to request authorization to fill local inspector's position. Previous inspector resigned from his position effective yesterday. I have been working with HR with respect to advertising and opening up to the most diverse pool of applicants. In addition, I will provide the advertisement to many of our local associations.
Okay. This is a pretty straightforward item. Any questions or comments? And I'm glad that you stated right up front that you're going to try to get as diverse an applicant pool as you can. So I'll move that we authorize the filling of the local building inspector vacancy in the Building Department. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
I'm here.
Scott, I'm losing it.
My name is still Heller.
Right.
Yes, aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Question of authorizing conditional employment to the following, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven firefighters. Aaron Cecil, Stephen Chin, Matthew McMahon, Grayson Russell, James Goff, Seth Mucha Kengas, and David Healy.
Mr. Chairman, could I address this? Chief Ward has a relative who's on this list, is not on this particular list, but may appear before you because he's on the system. So he's chosen to recuse himself from this. And Deputy Chief Sullivan is very ill and can't be here tonight. So I told him I'd take this on. So you've previously authorized to fill these vacancies. And these, there are six candidates who emerged from the civil service process and one who is, Mr. Heavey was formerly a firefighter and he's being rehired, as you might notice, on eight dash two of the, on the back of that memo. Recommend these conditional appointments at this time.
Okay. So these gentlemen are coming off of the civil service list.
Except for Mr. Heavey, who was previously employed by the town.
Right. Okay.
So another firefighter coming back after finding another place isn't as good.
Yes.
That's good for Brookline.
Questions or comments? Therefore, I'll move that we offer conditional employment to the following applicants for positions as firefighters. Aaron Cecil, Stephen Chin, Matthew McMahon, Grayson Russell, James Goff, Seth Mucha Kengas, and David Healy.
I think it's, I think the memo says Heavey. Does anybody?
It is Heavey.
Is it Heavey?
Yes, Heavey.
Or Healy?
Heavey.
Heavey. So make sure our vote reflects the correct name, not our agenda was wrong and misspelled the guy's name.
Right. It's H-E-A-V-E-Y. Okay.
Thank you.
All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Yeah, aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Are any of those guys with us tonight or no?
So the next item is question of some appointments. And we have one commission and a committee.
What about the holiday park?
Holiday park.
Oh. Oh, yeah, okay.
Got some Kara's here for that.
Oh, okay. I don't want to slight you, Kara. Sorry. So Kara Bruton, Economic Development Director, will appear to request a waiver of the metered parking fees on behalf of local merchants and merchant associations for the following events in support of visiting, supporting, and shopping in Brookline business and commercial districts. And this is November 26th, Small Business Saturday, and December 1st for the First Light Festival.
And we should say she's here, that Kara was a fabulous dancer for the Brookline Early Education Program at the Dancing With The Stars. She was outstanding.
Thank you, Nancy. There will not be a repeat performance tonight. So this request for parking, we haven't done free parking for the holidays, I think, since 2008 townwide. There certainly are pros and cons of offering free parking, but the merchant associations have, are requesting free parking just for a day and a half, one Small Business Saturday, and then limited hours just during the First Light Festival from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. on December
How will this be publicized?
So they will primarily get the word out with social media. That's part of the Small Business Saturday push as well, that hashtag shop small. So with this, it's another way that the town can show support as a true partner with the business community. So there will be media pushes out, especially with Stephanie's help too, you know, at Brookline MA, helping with shopping small, free holiday parking when they only.
Will our computerized meters be turned off?
That is still up for discussion of how we're going to actually implement that. We're going to talk about that tomorrow. We may end up bagging all of the meters to make it explicitly clear about holiday parking. So we're ironing that out after we figure out if we're going to do this or not.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
So it's all business and commercial districts, not just Coolidge Corner or Washington Square?
That's right.
So Putterham Circle as well, if there were meters out there.
Yes, there are not meters there. That's all private property, but yes. There is also going to be events even in St. Mary's commercial district. So by the time you carve out where all the events are going to be, it just made sense to go townwide unless there wasn't confusion.
So being that I see no comments or questions, I will move that we approve the waiver of metered parking fees on behalf of local merchants and merchant associations for the following events in support of visiting and supporting and shopping in Brookline business and commercial districts on the following days. November 26th for Small Business Saturday, and that'll be all day, and December 1st for the First Light Festival from 5:00 to 8:00. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll turn the next item, these are appointments, to the Conservation Commission and the Ninth School at Baldwin Project Oversight Committee over to Mr. Kleckner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the Conservation Commission, there are actually two terms that are expiring. One, Ms. Fenton has chosen not to seek reappointment. Ms. Myers has indicated she will seek reappointment. We haven't interviewed her yet, but there is one vacancy with Ms. Fenton. And there is one applicant who I believe you interviewed last week or the week before, who is Pam Harvey, who happens to be an associate member. So that is the only candidate. And so I would put Ms. Harvey's name up. All those approve, say aye.
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 Pamela Harvey has been appointed as a full member of the Conservation Commission. With respect to the Ninth Elementary School at Baldwin Committee, the Building Committee, there is a proposed slate, although I don't believe I have the parent names yet.
No, I thought we voted this last week.
I think we thought we'd have the parent names by then.
Yeah.
So there's nothing required to be done.
I think we voted all the other names.
Okay, sorry about that.
Yeah, so we don't need to.
We're all set now.
We can keep voting it, but.
No, that's okay.
But, yeah. I'll talk to you after. I've been gotten a few questions. Okay, I put, Selectman Daley asked that Article Four be put up on our calendar. Do we, should I see if we can talk about Article 22, see if we want to? And I know Mr. Banka is next door.
Yeah, McKenna was supposed to be here, was possibly coming. I don't know. I texted her and I said.
You wanted to see if Dick is there.
I said we probably wouldn't get to this until about 20:00.
Right.
What are you guys waiting for? Because we've already voted favorable action on your contractor. You're certainly welcome to sit here. Oh, okay. Welcome.
We left the process.
Okay. They're the only ones I know of.
You're on 22. Dick's 22.
Oh, okay. Well, I can tell you about Article Four. If you go to, in your warrant book and the supplement that you got this weekend, there's sort of beige pages, and that really is the addition of a couple of definitions. So it's essentially what you saw before with the addition of some definitions. But the thrust of Article Four is three things. They want to set the price, it's a, Article Four is a revision to an existing bylaw on tobacco control in the town of Brookline. And we have set the age for buying tobacco products at 21. So we were the first ones to do that, but now other communities are sort of ahead of us in these, on the related issues. So a high school student, McKenna Binker Cozen, brought this warrant article forward. She's concerned about the number of young people that start smoking, and then you're addicted and you continue smoking all your life. So this article would do, essentially, the three substantive provisions are, it would set a price on cigars that were sold individually or in packages of two at a minimum price of $2.50 per cigar. That's supposed to discourage young people from buying these individual cigars. No outlet could sell any flavored tobacco products except for retail tobacco stores. We have one retail tobacco store in Brookline. It's the cigar store in Coolidge Corner. And retail tobacco stores mean that when somebody comes in the door, they kind of have to show their proof of their age. They can't even, you know, wander around the store. So the other places, the convenience stores, the gas stations, other places where the tobacco products are sold, you don't have to show proof of age. So that's why it separates these two categories. Flavored cigarettes are already illegal nationally. This would ban other flavored products. So that would be like chewing tobacco, cigars, and the vaping, the electronic cigarette stuff that people do. And you can tell, as we went over last night, the, you can tell that the flavors are very much designed to appeal to kids. It's like, there was even one that was like trick cereal flavor and slushy flavor, and the rest of it reads like the ice cream board at J.P. Licks, you know? So they're very much trying to appeal to young people. So this would ban, though, the flavored products in Brookline. And then the, except at the one retail tobacco store. And then it would also ban the sale and distribution of blunt wraps, which apparently are tubes, hollow tubes, I guess wrapped usually in a tobacco leaf, that you fill with something to smoke. We sort of suspected this might be more of a drug thing than a cigarette, than a tobacco thing, but in, and as far as we know, nobody sells them in Brookline. So every community around Brookline, including Boston, Newton, Arlington, Belmont, and Watertown, have already adopted these provisions. And we did have some discussion about whether the minimum, whether we were allowed to set the minimum pricing on cigars, but it's, Boston's had it since 2012, and it hasn't been challenged. So probably, you know, it's okay, is what we're thinking. You know, basically McKenna was concerned that smoking is highly addictive, and, you know, these companies have, you know, are trying to interest young people and get them stuck for life smoking. So that was the idea, to make it harder, less attractive for young people. So I, as you know, you, previously, we voted to refer this to the Tobacco Control Committee. The Tobacco Control Committee has met twice and discussed this. We didn't get a chance to have a public hearing, so we don't have a committee-wide position that we can make, we can make public on that. My personal feeling after going through this and getting my questions answered is that it would be fine to go ahead and vote favorable action.
On the whole thing?
On the whole thing. The changes to the warrant article, the warrant Article Four, which changes our tobacco bylaw.
Right.
So, you know, that I would, we did hear, and probably some of you noticed today in your email, we got a letter from merchants around town. Eliya Saudi is on our committee, and he doesn't really have a problem with this. He said the only thing he sells that would be in there is, he sells some flavored chewing tobacco, and he says it's not a big part of his sales. He doesn't really have a problem giving it up. But we did hear from many of the other merchants in town who said they want this referred so that, you know, if there are going to be further changes, which there might be, we're going to go back and discuss other things now, that it all come at once. They also said at the subcommittee hearing for the Advisory Committee that they were kind of getting a windfall because nobody else in the area can sell the flavored tobacco products, so everyone's coming to Brookline to buy it. So I, you know, personally, I think we could go ahead and vote favorably on this and get going with it, and get in line with the community surrounding us, and, you know, deal with other changes later.
Okay.
And it was interesting, one of the things they said was they wanted to present evidence to us that, well, tobacco should be included, tobacco should be treated the same way as alcohol. But Dr. John Ross, who brought the, he brought the warrant article back in the spring, which we're going to get to his material next, we're going to go over that next, the committee is, but anyway, he gave us some data about that. In the U.S., there are 410,000 deaths a year related to primary smoking, and an additional 70,000 related to secondhand smoke, and there are only 88,000 deaths a year from alcohol-related causes. So the, smoking is five or six times more lethal than alcohol, so they're not totally equivalent.
Okay, so I will move that we reconsider Article Four. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Any other discussion?
Does anyone have any questions?
So just refresh my recollection on what your committee is going to be reviewing. It's the previous last spring's.
Well, this one too. So you, this board had previously voted to refer this article to us. We started discussing it already. And as I say, I now feel like my questions have been pretty much answered. And then we're going to look at the ideas brought forward by Dr. John Ross.
Right, from the spring.
And then we have some other ideas. We're, I think we're very interested in trying to put together some material for an educational program that we would like to see in the schools, because we really think that education at an earlier age, not high school, but sort of elementary school, middle school, might be a more effective way to get people not to take up smoking.
And you don't feel a passage of this article size your hands?
No.
Let you do some.
No, I think, I think it, you know, I mean, I think we would be, these would certainly be proposed in the spring.
Maybe incorporated into whatever the committee recommends.
Yeah, yeah. Right. So, you know, since they're ready to go, and it is striking when you look at the map and you see all the communities around Brookline have passed these. It's sort of striking.
Hopefully, if we pass this, we can prevent some kids from getting, from getting this stuff and getting addicted.
Right. Because we did talk a little bit about the vaping. I mean, the vaping stuff doesn't have the tar, so it's not as bad for your lungs, but it's still, it has nicotine in it. So it's addictive. And you actually, they were telling me this. It shows how, I know Ben already knows how out of it I am, but how out of things I am. They actually have, sell nicotine, you can hype the nicotine level in your vaping, you know, beyond the, whatever comes with the standard level.
The intended.
Yes. Yeah, so.
Okay.
And there is some evidence that it is a sort of, that people who start with the vaping go on to the smoking.
Okay, so I will move that we recommend favorable action on the revised petition motion. That's the appropriate motion?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. The last item on our calendars, Article 22. Let me, I know Mr. Banka is next door. Is there a sense, we voted favorable action on the article as proposed by the petitioners, which tries to solve the problem of oversized attics and basements in a certain way for all the residential zoning districts. And there've been some cases that have come up, especially in T, M, which, and F districts.
I have some information about that.
Okay. Sure.
So a couple of the people who brought this forward, well, one of, one person who brought this forward for the T districts, basically, you should have received an email from her today.
Right.
Saying that there'd been a difference of opinion in the interpretation of the article. Oh, here he is. I was just about to mention your name. Dick's interpretation.
You come up to the microphone.
Dick Banka's interpretation versus Building Inspector Yankovich. And so it turns out that the person who had brought the issue forward is not actually affected by this particular proposal. And the other person who was concerned about it, who was in an S zone, I believe, her situation also does not, is not affected by this article. So I suspect that they will not be speaking. I don't know this for a fact, but I suspect they won't, and they won't try to move it forward. That's my information.
I don't know. I could tell you a little bit about the history of what happened. Just to report, the Advisory Committee voted 26 to nothing to divide the question, and voted in favor, for favorable action on vote one by a vote of 24 to nothing to three exemptions, and favorable action on vote two by a vote of 22 to one to four.
So wait, how are they dividing the question?
Referred to as the Goldenrod case.
Twenty-two. This one's yours.
Vote one, I, this is actually something that I suggested.
Is this Goldenrod?
That's Goldenrod, yes. Isn't that obvious? This is something that I suggested when there seemed to be concerns about the elimination of the Section 5.22 exemptions in T districts. And for reasons that I'll explain, and that actually, we had a two-hour meeting with Mike Yanovich yesterday, and the, some of the individuals were concerned about this, who had been turned away at the desk at the Building Department, found that this was not an issue for them, for reasons that I'll explain. But I suggested dividing the question because I didn't want the issue of T districts to drag down the rest of the article, the core of the article, which is in vote one. What vote one does, it's the vote that requires essentially a special permit and design review for new construction, newly created spaces that are, even if they're unfinished, that are, that would put the building, if finished, over 100% of the allowable FAR. And that, you know, that was the effort that we made to address this McMansion issue and build-out issue in T districts while minimizing the impact on existing homes. For reasons I'll explain, I think the T district issue is not a serious issue with respect to basement and attic build-outs because of Mike Yanovich's interpretation and what we worked through. But I split the vote, and vote one does the special permit, and vote two will eliminate the exemptions in T, F, and M districts, the existing exemptions in T, F, and M districts. And there was some concern expressed about that. So, but, so you could vote yes on one and yes on two, which is what the Advisory Committee did, or yes on one, no on two. I guess you could vote no on both, but I don't know if that would matter. So Article 22 with both votes should not prevent anybody from finishing their basements or their attics, whether they're in a one-family zone, a two-family zone, or a one-family building, two-family building, multi-family building, in an S district, T district, M district, wherever they are. Article 22 basically says that large, newly created, unfinished basement and attic spaces, those meeting building code conventional requirements basically, require design review via a special permit if they would push the building over the allowable FAR if they were finished. And this was designed to address the fact that there is currently no review at all of unfinished basement and attic space, no matter how large it is. And there's been essentially a de facto invitation to build buildings that are 150% of the allowable FAR, regardless of how they fit into the neighborhood, or regardless of the impact on the butters. The Building Department, Mike Yanovich, has said that that provision makes similar large existing basements and attics into pre-existing non-conforming spaces. And the theory is that because we are now requiring a special permit to construct these large unfinished spaces, spaces similar to that, that were constructed in the past without a special permit, become non-conforming. So they are pre-existing non-conforming. And I think that the Building Department, in denying some of the people who came to the desk were saying, wait a minute, you're pre, you're non-conforming, but they didn't follow through the implications of that, and that's what we discussed at this meeting Under Section 8.02.2 of our zoning bylaw, pre-existing non-conforming spaces can be extended or altered as long as the zoning nonconformity is not increased. And because Mike considers the unfit, Mike Yanovich considers the unfinished spaces to be non-conforming, he's now agreed, and he has made clear, that finishing those spaces would not increase the nonconformity. So essentially, that applies regardless of the zoning district and regardless of the type of the property. And in addition, under state law, the zoning nonconformity for a one and two-family building can actually be increased as long as there's not a substantial detriment to the neighborhood. So there's kind of a double layer of protection for these pre-existing spaces. We actually did the specific analysis, I think you've gotten an email from Jenny Green. We actually did the specific analysis, I think you've gotten an email from Jenny Green. We sat down with her numbers, did a specific analysis of her property, which is actually a non-conforming use in a two-family zone. It's a three-family house in a two-family zone, non-conforming as to FAR, non-conforming as to use, and it's in a T district. So it's kind of the...
It's kind of all.
Yeah, it's the, it's the, it deals with all of the issues. She's actually going to be able to finish more of her basement and attic space under Article 22 than she would under the existing bylaw without Article 22 passing, because under the existing bylaw, she could finish out her basement and attic only to 150% of FAR. When that space, that unfinished space is deemed substantially non-conforming, she can finish all of it. And, but that's okay, because it's pre-existing bulk. I mean, it's not adding to the bulk of the building, and that's fine. And that, that step, the implications of this pre-existing nonconformity are what we discussed yesterday at this meeting, and I think what we're all in agreement on. Conversely, for buildings in T districts, where the unfinished basement and attic space would not push the building over the allowable FAR, all of that space could be finished, or additions could be added, because you'd still be under the allowable FAR. And that's the majority of buildings in T districts and in F districts, because the average FAR, the allowable FAR in T districts is extraordinarily high. It's .75 or it's 1.0. The average existing density in those districts, according to the assessors' records, is only between 55 and 68% of that allowable density without any exemptions. So what would our, what would vote two do? You'd get rid of the de facto invitation to tear down and build large, huge structures up to 150% of the allowable FAR. You'd get rid of the ability to add new additions that bulk up existing buildings to 120% of the allowable FAR. But isn't that what we want to do? I mean, that's kind of the question for town meeting. You have to bear in mind that the existing density in T districts is so high, and the, that the allowable FAR in T districts is so high, and the existing density is only 55, depending on whether it's a T5 or T6 district, and whether it's a single-family or two-family home. The existing density is only between 55 and 68% of the allowable density without any exemptions. So without the exemptions, you could add, you know, generally about 50% to the existing buildings, or, you know, buildings would be 50% bigger. If you add the exemptions in, the buildings could be up to about three times the size of the existing density in the T districts. So, I mean, we've seen what's happened in T districts, we've seen, you know, neighborhood conservation districts, downzoning, a lot of consternation about this, you know, until it gets tackled more broadly, and I know that the Planning Department, I understand, is starting to work on this issue. I'd support vote two as part of Article 22. You know, ultimately, it's up to town meeting how seriously they take that issue, so that's why I provided the option of the divided vote. And I would just add that, you know, we've tried multiple times to address the McMansion issue, you know, the T district issue was brought to our attention by Mike Yanovich. This is our best effort. We really haven't had any suggestion of anything better. You know, hopefully, this will work. We think it would discourage the de facto building out to 150%, and because of the protection given to pre-existing nonconformities, we think we've minimized the impact on existing buildings.
Okay.
So...
Well, I'm wondering, Sandy, I, we probably should...
Sandy's ruled that...
Sandy, Sandy will allow a divided vote.
Well, we should probably divide it, then, and, you know, vote on two halves, so we're in a step with the...
Yeah, it's a complicated enough article to complicate it more by having two competing motions, which would make things even worse.
Well, I'll move reconsideration.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And I'll move that we divide the vote, and the votes would, well, we would vote them separately, so the...
Along the lines of the golden rod sheets.
Right.
Which is basically the same as what we got before.
Well...
What we talked about last week.
Right.
That didn't vote for that.
Right. So, why don't, I guess I'll take two votes. So the first motion is to recommend favorable action on the...
I think we have to vote on dividing first, and then we can vote on the two parts.
Okay, so I'll move that we vote to divide. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And I'll move that we...
Chair votes aye.
Chair votes aye, yes. I'll move that we vote favorable action on the so-called first vote on the supplement number three, page two, golden rod. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And then I'll move that we vote a favorable action recommendation on the so-called second vote, starting on page five of supplement three. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you very much. So, I just want to say, I've said this before, but I don't think either Dick or we have been here. Thank you very much for your hard work on this. I know it's the third time around, it's clearly a complex article and a beast, and I want to thank both of you for dedicating so much time and effort.
And sticking with it, too.
Very well. We've done our best, you know, we may be back next year.
Okay, that concludes our business for tonight.